Okay, I call the meeting to order. I wanted to welcome everyone, whether you're attending here in person or watching virtually. For the record, all members of the town council are here. Cliff Gravier, our town manager, is also here. Molly, Daisy, our town clerk is here, Will Wharton, our IT person is here, and I did see Terry Teeman, our assistant town manager, as well. Before we start, could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the first item is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, okay. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the workshop, special meeting held on January 18th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I have one cosmetic correction.
Mm-hmm.
On page two, the third line, well, it's the fourth line down where it starts, "Currently residents receive..."
It's supposed to be one, not all.
Should be one.
Yeah, I sent it to her.
Currently residents receive... Oh, okay, got it.
She has it.
Okay, with that cosmetic correction?
Is that though it is? Cosmetic?
That's what he said.
You put it on gently.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on January 21st, 2022. Do I have a...
I'm sorry.
That's right.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Any cosmetic changes? Okay.
Let me see your makeup. You're all right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the financial report. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor. This report covers the budget through January 31st, 2022. We're 83% through the fiscal year 2022. On the operating budget revenue side, we have collected 115.9% of the budget revenue compared to 90.9% at this time last year. On the expense side, we have expended 79.4% of our budget amount compared to 74.5% at this time last year. Recognizing this report is subject to audit, I respectfully move that the council accept and approve this unaudited report.
Second.
Any discussion, questions for Mr. Morris? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is announcements and recognition of visitors and public comment. If, and does anyone on the council have anything they wish to say at this point? Okay. Anyone in the audience, anything not related to the, any item on the agenda? Okay. Next, we have reports. First, we have a report from the Planning and Zoning Commissioner, Mr. Boswell.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. At the last meeting, the planning commission completed and transmitted two ordinances to the council. One is on the proposed previous ground cover, and the other is on the, actually, the tenure plan draft, rough draft. The reasoning is that we want to give the council as much time as possible to evaluate what the planning commission's already done. Some of the, some of the charts and the maps are still in the process of being updated, and the pagination of the, the plan itself is ongoing. Tomorrow, we're gonna meet again and continue to refine and hopefully complete all the wording, wording on the tenure plan. So what you have is, I'd say, 99% of what we're gonna submit to you for your final review, that you'll be able to have your final review on. Any questions?
No, just wanted to say thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Our planning commissions here, so I'd like to, I'd like to personally thank them for all the work they've done. If it hadn't been for them and their computer expertise, which I have a lack thereof, it wouldn't be able to get to you in time. But thank...
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Planning Commission.
Great job.
Yes. Okay, next item on the agenda, report from the Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor. The Budget and Finance Committee met February 17th to discuss the proposed budget for fiscal 2023, which will begin this April 1st. The draft of the new budget revenue and expenses were discussed in detail. Statewide revenues are budgeted at $11,507,000. Operating costs are budgeted at $9,864,000, and capital and debt budget is $882,000. The Budget Committee discussed trash fees and recommends that the town council increase the annual residence fee by $100 and increase all other resident commercial trash fees in the same percentage. The town plans, the trash rate increased every three to five years, and it's been five years since their last increase. Costs to provide trash services have increased significantly over the past few years, including a 15% cost of personnel and a 28% cost in replacement of fire tr- yeah, replacement of trucks, not fire trucks. That's tough collecting trash, but the proposed fee change would make our residential rate $430 per year. Since our trash services is self-supporting, is self-supporting and operates like a business, separate from other town activities, the cost of running the sanitation department is funded 100% from trash fees. The proposed $430 residential fee is comparable with GFL Environmental, who charges $494 for residential fee, and it's, and Waste Management, who charges $410. It is likely that most, both of these companies will also be reevaluating their current fees since they are seeing similar increases. Bethany provides a much higher level of service than these companies. Both will pick up trash weekly, cycle every other week, and yard waste only on ex, with an extra fee. Our service is weekly trash pickup in the off-season and twice weekly in the summer, plus recycling weekly. Yard waste is included in weekly pickups from May through December and every other week from January through April. In addition, the Budget Committee recommends a change to residential parking fee, which we will discuss at part of New Business today. Comments on the budget can be mailed to admin@townbethany.com. The town council will hold a public hearing on March 14th to hear comments from the public on proposed budget. The next Budget and Finance Committee is Tuesday, March 15th at 10:00 a.m. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Any questions from anyone on council? Anyone in the audience? Okay, thank you. The next report is the Telecommunications Committee, Mr. Shepley.
Thank you, Mayor. The Telecommunications Committee met on January 28th, 2022 via Zoom. All members of the committee attended. We were given updates on several topics of interest by Cliff Gravier and John Apple. Number one, the current TV and Internet service, including the Comcast installation. Unfortunately, the Comcast installation has not gone as smoothly as we hoped. There have been numerous service interruptions, with over 30 of these affecting water mains and service lines. Those have required additional repair work for our water department. Comcast has informed us that work will continue through the summer. We continue to meet with them in an attempt to minimize problems. Work has been completed in the canal community, Lake Bethany, and most of Bethany West. Second area was an update on the wireless antenna installations. The town has hired an outside firm to review all 5G small cell wireless antenna applications for permits. The number of the applications from Verizon and AT&amp;T has decreased to about two or three a year. The cell phone providers have informed us that their goal is to provide 5G service to our downtown densely populated area and not to the entire town. What we are talking about here is cell phone service, not home Internet or TV service. Three, an update on T-Mobile Home Internet. Three of the, our committee members have installed this limited service from T-Mobile. It provides wireless Internet service only, with no TV service included. Both the speed and the reliability of the service is excellent, but the offering is currently being limited by T-Mobile so as not to overload their system. Other carriers, mainly Verizon and Comcast, are beginning to offer a similar service. This may turn out to be an attractive alternative to the traditional cable Internet services from MediaCom and Comcast. But keep in mind that this is Internet-only. It does not provide any TV or streaming services. The committee is working on two documents to be added to our website to aid residents and visitors. The first one is a help document that will offer basic Wi-Fi troubleshooting steps with links to additional resources and videos for further help. The second document is a description of the various telecommunications options that are available in our area. This will be educational and general in nature and not promote any specific technology or company. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Shepley. Any questions, comments?
Just more of an observation. It's amazing how all these various vendors only provide certain things, not all services. You can pick like A and B here, but A, B, and C there, but only C there. That's a little interesting.
Yeah.
You would think they offer a full array of, of services from each of the companies, not pick and choose.
Right, yeah.
I thought that, I was watching the Telecommunications Committee meeting, and I thought that it was, would be very helpful, the document that's being prepared with the options. And just because what it does is says, if this is what your need is, or if this is what you want, this would be the thing for you, rather than having people go through and try it. So I think that could be potentially very helpful for people.
We hope so, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shepley. Do we have a report from the Audit Committee? No, okay. A report from Stormwater and Flooding Committee, Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mayor. The Stormwater and Title Flooding Committee held a Zoom meeting on February 10th, and all our members attended. The agenda was to hear the results of the latest study on how to reduce flooding in Bethany Beach, and would there be unintended consequences for our neighbors in Ocean View and South Bethany? This McCormick-Taylor study was entitled, "Bethany Beach Loop Canal Flood Mitigation Concept Impact Study," and it was long. Mr. Gravier introduced the two engineers involved in the study, and Chris Brooks, one of the engineers, presented the report to us. The key findings were, A, the Bladder Dam and Tide Gate will prevent more than 90% of nuisance tidal flooding in Bethany. B, the dam would not harm our neighbors in the Assawoman Canal, such as Ocean View and South Bethany, and it could benefit Salt Pond. And C, the next steps are seeking funding for a preliminary design and then looking into permits, et cetera. This is a multi-year process and was estimated to cost between $1 and $5 million, and I believe Mr. Gravier will have more details in a moment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Frye, any questions for Mr. Frye? Comments? Anybody in the audience? Okay, thank you. And now, a report from the town manager, Mr. Gravier.
Mayor, council, this has been a very busy month for Bethany, an unusually busy month in the dead of winter, but it's been a month of a great transition for us. First, as we mentioned at our last meeting, we were losing our, our assistant town manager, John Apple. John had been with us for eight years and I think made a great impression on the community. And he's gone off to Atkins in New Hampshire, where he will be the equivalent of a town manager. They have a little bit of a different title. And again, we wish him well. He certainly, they have quite a, quite a great employee coming to them, and I, I hope he does well. We have also, this month, lost our head horticulturist, Melinda Lindy. Melindy, Melinda had been with us for 17 years. We roughly tallied that she had planted 360,000 tulip bulbs in that time, and she was just an incredible asset. One of the things that, we had a, a small gathering for her of staff and council members in these COVID times last week to let her know how much we were going to miss her and how valuable she was to us. But one of the comments I had there was that I'd always heard or had people that I'd worked with tell me that they were completely indispensable, that with the day I leave, you're gonna have to hire two or three people, and this place will fall apart if, if, if I leave this, this employment. I had never met that person until Melinda Lindy, and, and she was that person, and, and she will be sorely missed. The silver lining in all this is we now have Terry Teeman with us. Terry is a grizzled veteran of, of public administration, and is, is already, already proving her, her worth here, and, and glad to have Terry on board. Fire and ice was a huge success. I think by, by any standard, you, you could measure it in here in the middle of February. The weather cooperated in a very bizarre way, very, very warm in the day, cooled off enough that the sculptors were able to bring the ice out, even though they were supposed to start to carve in the morning. They waited, and thank goodness, they made the decision till about four or five to get that work done. Elvis was a hit, as always, on the boardwalk, and our new fireworks vendor, I think, hit it out of the park with the show. We'll be bringing him back on board this July 4th. Kudos, as always. Congrats to Public Works for everything they put into those, those types of days we have here, and for Julie for coordinating with, with the chamber on the event. This week, staff has met with the contractor, the contractor that calls themselves the Electrical Vehicle Institute regarding the installation of four more dual charging stations. Four at the north end of Pennsylvania Avenue and four towards the south end of Pennsylvania Avenue. They are offering us another charger that's a little bit more capable and promises to charge Teslas in a much shorter time. There's an additional cost with that, and we'll look at some of those installs also. Mr. Frye mentioned the Bladder Dam, and the study was positive. We're, we're very pleased with what we have in hand with the study to date. The next portion of the study is to create what the engineers call a 30% design project, and I'll read this to, to make sure that I can get it all. And that includes a survey, geotechnical exploration and development of the project at TSNL, including the basic details of the dam apparatus, conceptual structures for the foundation, and seepage control beneath the dam, staging of the infrastructure of the dam pump and power supply, and plans showing the anticipated limits of disturbance, construction access, and anticipated easement requirements. The plan will also include the installation of a tidal flap gate at the 36-inch pipe under the bike path north of the Saw Pond. The estimated cost for this work is $251,000, and the town, through McCormick and Taylor, is preparing a grant application to DEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. The application should be in by early summer, and we hope to have award information by late August. We've also signed an extra work order agreement with McCormick-Taylor to, to look a little bit more deeply into any potential impact in Ocean View. We're quite comfortable with the, the results of the study would show minimal impact, but we want to go with the extra step and, and push farther in, in terms of what we're looking at in Ocean View to allay any concerns that they may have in the future. We're also going to have a discussion with Matore-McTaylor regarding the possibility of an extra work order to, to take a, a good look at the Saw Pond. There's over 500 residences in the Saw Pond, and we believe the dam will have the same impact for the Saw Pond that it will for us. And being able to prove that and bring them on board as we go forward and seek, and seek additional funding, state and federal funding, I think will be a benefit to us. There was conversation here earlier in the week in the workshop about zoning on the Walcheck Demetitis property, and we went back and forth, and I don't know if we made it clear. We have, just here Monday, as a matter of fact, before the meeting, Susan and I had an email exchange where we're going to our surveyor, so the surveyor can remove all the different boundary lines, and there's four different boundary lines in the Walcheck property, but to remove them all and refile with the county. At the point in time, we have that clear survey on file. We'll come back to the, the town council to zone the property more as our other more properties are. Delaware's congressional delegation is leading an effort to have the United States Corps really reprioritize America's beaches and coastline as one of their highest priorities. With recently introduced legislation to that end, Senator Carper in Delaware's, he's Delaware's, I would say, premier, premier advocate for shoreline protection, and one of America's lead advocates for shoreline protection, is sponsoring Senate Bill 3624, the Shoreline Health Oversight Restoration and Resilience Enhancement Act. The bill not only establishes a number of important protections for the country's coastline, and the reason I'm bringing this up here today, but it also extends for another 50 years authorizations of seven beach nourishment projects throughout America. And the first on that list is the Delaware Coast Protection, and the Delaware Coast Protection is coastal protection from Cape Penlope to the Maryland Line at Fenwick Island. Representative Blunt-Rochester is, has a companion bill in the House of Representatives. So the, this is unprecedented in, in what it is doing to really take a look and ensure core interest and resources in the future of, of restoration and preservation of America's beaches, and it's very, very important for us here in Bethany Beach. Senator Coons is also the lead sponsor of Senate Bill 3531, the National Climate Adoption Resilience Strategy. This is a bill that's dealing with climate change and sea level rise, and it also has a very heavy emphasis on the protection and restoration of America's shoreline. Kudos, congratulations, and big thank yous to Delaware's congressional delegation. Mayor, that's all I have.
Anybody?
Cliff, remind us, who, who controls the Assawoman and who controls the Bethany Loop Canal?
The Loop Canal, we control, but Denrick controls anything that's done within the Loop because it's a body of water, and the Assawoman, the Assawoman and 50 feet on either side of the Assawoman's shores is owned and controlled by the state of Delaware and Denrick.
Yes. I, I just, I just thought was, well, a lot of people get that confused, like, we, we control all that, and we, and we don't.
Right. Well, the important thing that you don't realize is that 50-foot span behind, I mean, to the east and west of the Assawoman itself is, is part of Denrick's property.
Yes. Thank you.
And that is where essentially the dam would be constructed within Denrick property, on Denrick property.
I got, there's, there was always some confusion, people, about the, the ownership and responsibility for those two bodies of water.
Right.
I thought it was, well, just putting out there, so.
Well, this 30% study may come back and tell us, and I hate to even utter the words, but it may come back to tell us that there's some significant issues that we can't get around or get past regarding the construction. But this is where we have to go now to, to, to have that, to find that out, so.
And continuing with that, the Bladder Dam study, just so, just publicly say that Mr. Gravier and I have met with the Ocean View people, the mayor and the town manager, over this, and we'll continue to do that, because we want to be good neighbors and give them the level of comfort that we won't be solving one problem and creating another. So that's why we're going to these extra lengths to be sure that we are good neighbors, and I thank you, Mr. Gravier, for doing that. And also, just to follow up on something you said, I think the state of Delaware, especially the coastal communities, owe Mr. Senator Carper a debt of gratitude, a longstanding debt of gratitude. He's been very instrumental in getting us beach replenishment and helping with clean water and everything else, so I'm glad to see that he's doing that, and also that Senator Coons is on board.
Well, throughout his entire career, from, from the days as governor, he's just been very concerned, and he's really worked at it.
Yeah.
Again, thank you.
I just want to, what I want to make, because there's some confusion, I think, with people, especially me. When they say the Bladder Dam, the Bladder Dam, the Bladder part is actually only what raises and lowers the, the, the dam structure, but the dam itself is, is a metal structure. Because if you really think about how much pressure is going to be on this, on, on this, this dam when, when water is coming in from various directions, so you people say, well, how can a bladder? No, that's just to raise it and lower it, but again, some things I've heard that people are a little, little confused about. They thought it was kind of like a, you know, a flexible, you know, comes across, but just wanted to put that out, too.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone in the audience? Okay. Next item?
Next item. Under New Business, discussion can consider certain apostle vote on the 2022 summary event schedule. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Kilmer. As you're aware, the shoulder season in Bethany Beach has been getting longer and longer. It extends far beyond Memorial Day and to Labor Day, and begins earlier and earlier in the spring and ends later and later in the fall, and even as we saw this past weekend in the winter. And after, when we had no, we didn't have any entertainment or any events during 2020 because of COVID, and when 20, at the start of 2021, Mr. Gravier suggested that we try a new approach, an experiment. And after conferring with the businesses and the council, the town went ahead and tried the experiment last year, which was, instead of focusing and concentrating all of the events and the bandstand performances within basically July and August, that we would have fewer of them in the summer and extend them out over the rest of the shoulder season. And the businesses were very much in favor of this, because as you know, they don't need the crowds down here in the, on Saturday and Sunday, they get them anyway, but they appreciated the help over the shoulder season. So we had them, all the, the concerts went until the end of October, bonfires, instead of having them in the heat of the summer, we had them in the fall, and the movies on the beach, too, were on different days. So this year, Julie Maluski, our wonderful events coordinator, sent out her survey to find out how the public reacted to this, and the results of the survey were overwhelmingly in favor of continuing what we have today, what we've had this past summer. So with that, she has prepared, and based on the survey, too, she, she scheduled groups that people really liked and would like to see again next year. You have that schedule in front of you, and you'll notice, too, that it begins earlier this year, which we would, wanted to do last year, but because of COVID, we couldn't. Bonfires will start the last two weeks in April. last year, but because of COVID, we couldn't. Bonfires will start the last two weeks in April, and the bandstand performances will begin in May. So, we'll extend those out in either direction and see how people like it this year. But based upon the survey, it seemed that people really, really appreciated it, and the businesses liked it, too. So, with that, I'd like to move that we approve the events calendar that was given to us for 2022.
Oh, she's second. Oh, I make a motion, I approve.
An important thing here is we don't normally bring the events calendar for council approval. The reason we're bringing it here is because of the change of how we're scheduling events. So, that's one of the things you're voting on, yes.
Thank you.
Is there a reason why it's somewhere in yellow?
That's Julie's work, and no, I don't know.
Can I add one thing, which I'm not sure this is the place for it, but it sort of builds off the success of Fire and Ice, which is, a lot of these programs are now outside of, like, traditional parking enforcement windows. And Fire and Ice was such a success, it was so busy, I noticed that people were parking kind of in front of alleys and things like that. And I think some of that had to do with the perfect storm of the weather, because it was really nice that day, and then, you know, but there may be just something we want to keep an eye on, on how we look at some of these things, like, particularly in that early shoulder season, like, right before May 15th and right after September 15th.
That was packed. That Fire and Ice was like, was like, what the?
It's truly an aberration with the fireworks and the events of the day. And we didn't bring, obviously, adequate staff on as it relates to parking and law enforcement for the crowd, but who knew? But these other ones should just be almost our, what I'll call our routine bandstand performances, so.
I'd like to do a commercial, a public service announcement, please. I've received a number of emails from people who said that they loved the fireworks, they wish they could have seen Elvis, they watched it from home. And the commercial is this. In order to be able to broadcast, which we would love to broadcast, the bandstand performances to your home next year for people who are homebound, people who don't live here, who would love to see it. And the only way we can do that is by getting 1,000 subscribers on our YouTube channel. Right now, I checked it this morning, we have 660. So, we need 340 more people who love their neighbors enough to go online and sign up. It's free, and you're under no obligation to watch it from home. You can come down here anyway, but just as long as we have that magic number. And you don't have to live in Bethany Beach, you can live in Ocean View, you can live anywhere you want, but just please subscribe. And you can help our businesses this way. You can order online the day of the concert, go down and pick up your meal in a 15-minute parking spot, come home in the comfort of your home, and turn on YouTube and watch the bandstand performance. So, that's my commercial.
Wow. Is this a new career for you?
Julie's paying me. Okay. Is that it?
Are we voting? No, we're not voting on that.
It says possible vote. We don't vote on it, we're just voting?
He just told us that.
No, please, vote on the change.
Yeah, vote on the change.
Oh, vote on the change.
We made motion and second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Or anybody opposed? Or motion passes?
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration and possible vote on an increase for residential parking permit fees. Mr. Morris?
Thank you. Always get me from the money part of things.
It's all your fault.
That's my job. Remember that. All you voters.
His email address is.
In any case, the Budget Committee is recommending an increase in cost to the second residential parking permit. You know, each resident receives one free parking permit and is allowed to purchase a second one. This fee for the second permit at present is $35, and it's been this way for 10 years. In that period, the non-property owner costs, which are visitors and so forth that come down, that cost has been adjusted from $1.50 to $2.50 per hour. In addition, justification for this increase is the change made at the beginning of the pandemic to allow the residents to use, residents with a parking permit, to park at the 14 beach and lots without restriction. This prevents visitors from using those spaces, and is a substantial loss in parking revenue for the town. The Budget Committee recommends an increase from $35 to 50 to partially offset the cost. Discussion?
Do you want to set a motion?
That's a motion.
Have a second?
I say.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
So, one of the points is the difference between residential and parking. Now, non-residents have seen a 67% increase. So, I think the max increase with the $50 is 40?
Forty-three, 42%.
Yes. And one of the, one of the things to note here, so your first residential parking permit is free, you'll pay 50 for the second. And with that, you can park in beachfront lots for the entire pay-to-park period, which is 10 to 10 or 10 to 11. If you were to do that and just put money in the meters and for the entire season, for when you could do that, that would cost you $3,300. So, for your $50, you're able to do essentially the same thing with your second permit and even your first permit, so.
Thank you.
And since COVID, you know, when we permitted that to happen, you know, the parking passage to be in there, it's a very popular, you know, it's like something we just can't take away now.
Well, the loss to parking was roughly estimated to be between $70,000 and $80,000. And this doesn't put back 20,000 to 30,000, 30,000 of that.
Yeah, puts back about 30,000. It doesn't cover the cost.
It's a very popular.
It's been what we're saying.
It's well-received, right.
And when we passed it last year, we did it as an experiment, and we said that if we lost too much money in the beachfront lots by allowing people to park there with a residential parking permit free of charge, then we would revisit it and see if we would continue it. So, to me, this is, this is, there's an option here. We either don't continue with the beachfront lot parking, or we charge something for it, and I think it's a no-brainer in terms of the people who live here. Any comments? Any more discussion? Anybody in the audience? Okay. So, hearing a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, Mr. Morris. That wasn't so bad.
No.
M-O-R-R-I-N.
I'm not running for election, remember that.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible vote on changes in yard waste and bulk trash pickup policies and ordinances. Mr. Gravier?
Public Works has been interested for a number of years in changing some of our policies, not extremely as it relates to bulk pickup and yard waste, but some minor changes that could have a large impact on what they have to pick up and the things they're subjected to. The council has seen some photos where it's apparent that some people empty their homes of every stick of furniture and anything else they can find for Public Works to pick up, and/or cut down multiple trees with tree trunks, seven, eight, nine, 10 inches in diameter, and leave the entire tree for Public Works to pick up. There's two sets of suggestions. One deals with yard waste and will require two legislative changes that the council moves forward with this issue today. We'll bring to you. One is that limbs are delineated in our code to be four inches, and Public Works would like to cut that down to three inches. And the other one is that, currently in the code, you're allowed to leave logs out, and Public Works would like you, would like to no longer have to wrestle with logs that probably should be removed by another service or a tree service. So, those would be two separate legislative changes that you would see if you vote this forward. And the other changes are limiting bulk pickups to one pickup in time periods for bulk pickups instead of just the unlimited. And the second part would be that bulk pickup is limited to six individual items. There's one other change that's not listed here in this document. Yes, it is. So, the current fee for bulk pickups is $47. We're recommending to take it to 50, and then Public Works will also be able to set a higher number if there are more items or there's something that they can help with that might be outside of what's listed here. So, those are two sets of suggestions, the two for bulk and the two for yard. And again, if you vote this forward, we'll bring the legislative changes next month to you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of points like that. First of all, outstanding job what this town does, dealing with. I mean, you compare it to all these other services that other people, other towns have to subscribe to, we go above and beyond all that, and it's fantastic. And the guys that work in Public Works, they're second to none, they really are. They do things that technically, hopefully, this will, in writing, say what people could do and what they can't do. Because a lot of people say, where does it say I can't do that? You know, so, this is now, they can point this, where you can say. One of the things I would like to suggest, because a lot of people, especially in the summertime, who are either renting a property or they're about the use of plastic bags. I think we don't want stuff in plastic bags, you know, the yard waste in plastic bags. But I think for an educational point of view, if we could put a sticker on that saying, you know, for people who do it over and over again, put a sticker on that and say, you know, this is not, you know, you cannot do this in the future. Because a lot of times, it's educational, they didn't know they couldn't do that. So, I think, something, I know it's a little pain in the ass for the guys in Public Works to do that, but at least it's our attempt to sit there and, you know, and not have all that stuff laying out there, because we're not going to pick it up anymore. So, it's just a thought.
Generally, they just don't let it lay. I think they make an effort to go back.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, if, in the future, if it says, we're not going to pick this stuff up, and, but they didn't know that, and they're to see it, and they come back the next week, it's still there, you know, in the future, I'm not, they do it now. Just a thought, so, it's an educational process for people who don't know the difference.
I didn't think we picked up, picked up anything in plastic bags right now in yard waste.
That's what I think Lou's speaking to, right? That we, but right now, they'll knock on a door and they'll inform people that they won't do the pickup in plastic bags.
Yeah, but a lot of times, they're not there. You know, they come, they come down for the weekend, put the stuff out there, and they're going for the rest of the week. That's, I know it's a little burden on the thing, but also, I don't want this thing laying out there all the time, because we're not going to pick it up in the future.
We'll work to, we'll work to find a resolution of that.
Yeah, that's all. Just a thought.
Mr. Shepley?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments and a question. I think it's sort of in the same vein as Lou just spoke. It's important that we do some education and some advertising on, especially these changes. I was not aware, and I don't even know if it is the case now, but we're going to restrict the free pickups to one during each of the two-week periods.
Yes.
We're going to restrict it to six individual items.
Right.
And the only, the bulk items can only be put out two days ahead of time. I think all of those items are important to make sure that people are aware of. My question is the, an additional bulk pickup, is that only during the two weeks in April or October? Can that be done anytime during the year?
You can call Public Works.
Okay. I think that's important, too, to let people know that we will offer or will provide an additional pickup anytime during the year for that $50 fee.
These two, these two sets of changes have been on the town's website, on the homepage, under the news items about the last two weeks. If they're passed, we'll go ahead, we'll put them on the listserv, leave them on the homepage, and try to figure out other ways to communicate the information.
Good, good.
How many people use the, like, mid-season bulk pickup? How many people call for that?
It's very, very popular. I don't have a count for you.
And does $50 actually cover the cost of doing it?
No, probably not, but it's, you know, it's a service, one of the things we offer, so. I mean, the concern is that people bring a couple of trucks from Alexandria, so, and unload and call Public Works, so.
Yeah. I really think that this is long overdue. Last summer, when I was walking up and down Atlantic Avenue, I always parried up and down the streets, I was astonished at a couple of homes that had, it looked like they emptied their house out and put it out by the driveway.
Yes.
And it stayed there. You know, they put it out early, and it stayed there. It's, it really damages the image of the town. So, this is, this upgrade and the education part of it really is important.
Can they still do that now, though, and just call and be charged $50?
Well, you're limited to six items.
So, the $50 would still be limited to six items?
No.
No, no, no.
The.
We're talking about the bulk pickup.
The bulk pickup, yeah, but the $50 pickup, the separate one, is that limited to 50? That's just six items? If he would call during the year for a pickup for $50, that's not limited to six items?
No.
No, yeah.
So, but I guess it would be scheduled so it wouldn't be sitting out there for weeks on end.
Well, that's right. They would schedule, you know, they'd call Brent and say, we're going to, he wants something picked up, and he'd say, I can pick it up next Thursday. And hopefully, they'll put it out on Wednesday, not three weeks in advance.
Right.
I think he would tell them ahead of time not to do that, so.
Well, Jerry, on a lighter note, I think we furnish our entire house to a bulk pickup. So, six items or less, we're going to put it up.
And because you're calling Public Works, they can screen what's coming out.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, I think the town has been very generous up to this point, and with no limits, and people have been pretty good. But I think once people start abusing it, because I, like Mr. Morris, I saw the pictures that we were shown with just these.
It's unbelievable.
Unbelievable what people put out and the amount and everything, and that takes up a whole truck. So, there's nothing left for anybody else right then. So, I think this is a good change. Plus, you know, all the work that the guys in Public Works put in, and some of these are really heavy.
Yes, they are.
Okay. Any more discussion? Anyone in the audience? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion on the floor, a second, and can we have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Gravier. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible vote on a contract submitted by Albin Caterpillar for the purchase of a 2022 Caterpillar Mini Excavator in the amount of $82,662.83. Mr. Gravier?
Mayor, you have a purchase order before you for the purchase of a 2022 Caterpillar Model 3035 for $82,662. This replaces an 18-year-old mini excavator the town currently owns that's having mechanical issues. The equipment that's included with this are two buckets, a belt coupler, jackhammer attachment, and all necessary hardware to mount that equipment and other implements as needed. Other bids were solicited. One bid came from Burke Equipment for $65,000, but had none of the accessory equipment, and another came from Chesapeake Equipment with no attachments and no extra buckets for $108,000.
Isn't that amazing?
The bid that met the specs that we had was the bid from Carter Machinery for the $82,000. So, Mayor, if you want to move ahead with this, a motion and a second?
We have a motion.
I'd like to make, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract with Carter Machinery Company, Inc., for a new 2022 Caterpillar Model 3035 Mini Extractor with the attachments that are listed on the purchase order for $82,662.83.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? Any questions?
I just wanted to comment, the $26,000 difference. Isn't that incredible?
Well, the fact that nobody meets the specs and the difference in prices, yes.
Yeah, from $82,000 to $108,000, and that's without the additional attachment. Incredible. You know, and these guys at Carter, they aren't giving this to us. It's amazing.
Cliff, what do we do with the old one?
I think if they can salvage it and use it for backup, if it's still serviceable, they'll service it. But I don't think there's any market for it.
No market for it.
Oh, I thought I was getting it.
We can drop it off.
For bulk picking. And this is in the budget, this is in this next year's budget.
You want it in the driveway or in front of the house?
To make it, to make it clear, we're just authorizing, we're just authorizing the use of the money that's already in the budget for this.
Right. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, a second. Anybody in the audience have anything? Anybody in the audience have anything? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. I think that's, that's it on the agenda. Thank you all for coming, and could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all.